Welcome, everybody. I am Mayor Groba. We have a couple of, well, we have almost all our whole city council here tonight. We have Councilor Kayler, Councilor Wetner, and Councilor Boulder here, along with city staff. And we're really happy to have some folks that have come in here tonight to listen to us speak on behalf of a couple of items that we've been working at at the city council. Before we go into depth on that, I just kind of want to let you guys know how the format's going to go tonight. We're going to give a description of the two items that we're going to be speaking of. One is going to be the garbage or rubbish ordinance, and the other one is going to be the ambulance. Lisa Riggs, our deputy city administrator, will be around. She's right down here. If you have a question that comes up, please raise your hand, and she will give you a form to fill out, and will be taking any questions that are pertinent to the information that we're giving out tonight. So this is our second town forum this year. The first one was as we made the move from the law enforcement center over to Bacchus for our police department, which is on the third floor, as a temporary move. Historically, in the time that I've been on council, there's been one other town hall meeting that we've had discussing city questions and concerns. And just to give a little background on that, that was on a dog park. It came up that we had an opportunity to bring in a dog park into the community, and as we had a community discussion, it became very clear that the folks in International Falls believed that we had bigger problems than a dog park when it came to recreation. So at that time, we had a joint task force between the city and the school district that runs the recreation in our community, and we assessed the buildings and the programs that we run in the community. Some of the changes that it came out of that is the Cary Park project that we're actively seeking due to the community conversations that we had back then. Also, in addition to that, we have restructured how the recreation department works in the city, and the city has taken over the Cary Park complex, and the school district is doing all programming, and we are now maintaining our own facilities as part of that discussion that we have. So as we're having these community town halls, I want you to all understand that it is our intent to be here to listen, to understand, to be able to put the conversations that the community have back into the ordinances and the resolutions that we have, and we're working for the residents of International Falls at every turn that we're doing. So again, if you have any questions that you want to bring up to the council or to the fire chief on regards to the information that we have today, please raise your hand, and Lisa will come up and give you a note card to write down a question. So the first item that we have today for our discussion is the rubbish and garbage ordinance. And historically, when we have a, when we have an ordinance that's going to be a new ordinance, we have a first reading, and then we have a second reading of that said ordinance. We had asked for community input on the first, or before we had the first reading of the ordinance in the past, we did not have any folks come and have that discussion with us. So at that point, we did have a first reading of the ordinance, and we did believe that there was going to be some concerns and heartache from the community when we did that first reading. I made it very clear that there was going to be a community input at Committee of the Whole meeting with the city council, and we did fill the chambers on that particular discussion point on the garbage ordinance. The issues that we've been having with garbage in our community is, comes down to people not getting the garbage out to a garbage. We have situations with hoarders, we have situations with, we have situations with getting garbage from homes to the landfill. With that being said, we did have an ordinance that had some heartburn. Originally, the conversation was going to be that we were going to mandate that all houses in the city of International Falls have garbage service. We would be contracting with a company to do that, and the folks that came into our Committee of the Whole meeting were pretty clear that that is something that they did not want to do. There were folks in our community that haul their own garbage, and they are doing the right thing. And the big piece that came out of that, that we heard loud and clear, is that if there are folks that are not doing the correct thing in hauling their own garbage and taking their own garbage, those are the folks that we need to put the onus on to be mandated to have garbage service. So one of the things that we did is we went back to that original ordinance, and we cleaned it up. We did make it so that now, in the event that you get a blight ticket, then on your, after your first blight ticket, you would then have to get garbage service contracted between any of the contractors that haul garbage service, whether you, however that works out. I would ask really quick for our city attorney to just come up and just give a quick, brief rundown of this particular ordinance. I told her she didn't have to sit on stage, but she still has to answer a question. Just give a quick rundown on what the ordinance does and what the goal of the particular ordinance is. You don't have to come on stage, we just have a spot for you right now.
Where?
She has a microphone for you.
Okay. I'll crawl back down. Yep. Okay. Okay. So the rubbish and garbage ordinance was recreated from the IPMC Section 308, which is basically what's in front of you. We just made some minor tweaks. One of them was that garbage has to be hauled weekly. If you don't have your garbage hauled or you don't have your garbage removed and you receive a blight ticket, you have 14 days to contract with your own garbage provider of your choice. If you don't, the city can require and create a contractual relationship with one of the garbage providers to pick up garbage, and it would be billed to you. The city would pay it if they had to, and then it could be assessed back on your property taxes if they needed to.
That is very clear what we are looking for. So again, the garbage ordinance that we originally looked at did not seem to work. This is what we've heard from the folks in the community, that if you are, if it is someone who we're having problems with, to then mandate them to have that service. So is there any questions that we have on this? Because again, Lisa will be able to hand out the flyers. Does anyone on the council have any, any more comments that you have on the garbage ordinance? All right, Lisa, I see you have a question.
I have a couple, I do have a couple of questions here. The first one is, it states, 308.22 states, "Every commercial establishment shall store dumpsters within an enclosure." I thought it was optional if a business wanted an enclosure. Some businesses do not have room for enclosures.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that we had a great conversation about. And it was my understanding that there would not be enclosures mandated. Is that, is that accurate? That is accurate. Is there, is the wording incorrect on this?
It may not be, it's pretty much, but that would be all the same.
Okay. Yes, that is correct. It would be, the one that we will be reading, and having the first reading and the second reading, that is the intent of the city council, that it would be optional for businesses to have enclosures.
All right, the next question is, "It's like receiving a blanket email at work regarding an issue. The responsible and conscientious employee scrutinizes their actions while the employee committing the infraction doesn't have twice as, twice as that. Is their work ethic so they do not correct their actions? The issue needs to be addressed to the individuals not following the ordinance. Those that are already complying should not have the onus on them to submit on record any kind of documentation. Does this not feel under the blight inspection?"
I need more information on that.
Do you want me to say?
Yeah.
It's basically like you get that blanket email at work. It's basically like you get that blanket email at work, saying that there's an issue. The conscientious worker, right away, starts second guessing, is this something I'm doing? Even though they're doing the job the right way. The worker who doesn't have work ethic and slacks and does whatever that the email is actually about, doesn't change anything because it's not about them. So my, my comment is that everyone in the city should not have to document who their garbage provider is.
They don't have to.
That's what it says. And the last 308.4 registration with the city, unless I misunderstood that. Every owner of every occupied premises shall register with the city of International Falls the name of an approved garbage and rubbish disposal contractor. Contracted to remove garbage and rubbish from the premises on at least a weekly basis or written statement agreeing that the owner shall comply with the requirements of this section and remove all garbage and rubbish from the premises on at least a weekly basis."
You can also, but that was one of the things that we had the discussion on as well, and if you haul your own garbage, you would be able to have that on there as well.
Registration with the city. So you're saying that every household owner needs to register with the city who their garbage provider is? That's what it states?
That, that is not the original intention that we had, and again, this may be, and I apologize if this isn't an older ordinance, but again, when we have the first reading, that is not the intention of what we have. The conversations that we've had is to put the ordinance on the onus of the people that have made the, have gotten the blight tickets.
Yeah, they got the blight tickets.
So that, that is where we, we are, and that's the way that the, when we have our first reading, if there is anything different than that, that is not, this is not the final copy that is going to the council.
But I'm not talking about the first reading, I'm talking about the one we have right here.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood, and I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yep. Why fix a garbage system that's working okay? Make blight officer do his job.
I think that how we've gotten to this point is, our blight officer is doing his job. We are having, the reason we're having this conversation is, we can't, there's dates that have to be met by state statutes. From when somebody is blighted, they get a certain amount of days. Chief, how many days is it? Is it 14, seven, 14? 14 days, and then we can check it again, and then we have to, then we can do something, but again, then we have a more timeframe that has to go into it. He can do his job all, every day, but the timeframes that are related to the state of Minnesota, we can't, we can't change those. But what we can do is, once you have an infraction, make it so that we can mandate that you have the garbage service as we move forward.
Okay, the next question. It states that no dumpster may be placed in any residential area for over two weeks. If a contractor is working on home improvements project that lasts over two weeks, does the dumpster need to be removed before the project is completed?
No, and this is, that is one of the conversations that we've had with friends specifically, is they've been, they've been in the council chambers as we've had a lot of these discussions on, on the garbage service. And please, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the goals that they're having, is to try to get these dumpsters removed within two weeks as well. And yes, if they're still using them, that makes perfect sense for contractor jobs or, or anything like that. The problem that we're having is the dumpsters that are sitting at a property and filling up and not getting removed for multiple weeks, and just filling up with garbage and/or not being emptied. Would that be a correct assessment from, from friends? Thank you.
Next question. What is the definition of rubbish, garbage, and blight?
The definition of rubbish, it's, it's in here. Please.
It's in, is it being part of chapter three of the IPMC? They're all aligned?
It's in IMHC.
Yeah. It's in the International Building Code, which, which we have. That is something, we can get that information. We'll have it at our city council meeting, but it's what, what all of our definitions for city, our city building code, and we have all of that information. We will state that very clearly for, at Monday's council meeting, because it is a good question. And it'll also be stated when we put this into action.
Okay, next question. How many properties have a garbage or rubbish problem? Less than 50%. Why do we believe that rule by minority is appropriate in our community?
Jared, could you answer that question?
Nobody are we currently dealing with a garbage problem?
Yes.
I wouldn't know the exact number off the top of my head, but this summer, we wrote a little over 300 blight notices.
Can you guys hear him?
So, and I was going to restate it. Oh, please, go ahead and bring that back. So far, what he has said is, this summer, we had a little over 300 blight notices?
So this summer, we had a little over 300 blight notices that were issued to property owners for all different things related to blight, garbage, garbage being one of them. I think if I look back on our registry, on our log, we're dealing with 50 properties right now that have a garbage problem, and we've had six new ones in the last week that we've been made notified of. So those ones are in the early, early stages of the blight process.
Thank you.
How many properties total in town? And how many are there? Are there 2,000 properties in town?
How many, Lisa, how many billable water bills do we have in, in the community?
All right, around 2,000.
Around 2,000.
So we're talking about 1%,?
We're talking about 1%, and what we're looking at doing here is putting the garbage ordinance on those folks that are, that have the, have the situation and the issue.
But this affects everybody, not just, you want to affect 99% of the population because 1%, right? Doesn't mean they're 100%?
I don't think that that's what this ordinance is going to do.
Oh, can I?
Absolutely.
Well, I'll just comment.
Should we shut it off?
Whatever. I will just make a comment on that. Most laws in our country aren't for the majority of the people, it's for the people that break the laws. If we're just going to not do stuff because everybody else is behaving, well, that's not how it works, and that's for public safety of everyone. And if you're the neighbor, let's say we only have 20 houses in town, but you're the neighbor that lives next to that person, that's more than enough to want a garbage ordinance and regulations so it doesn't affect you yourself. And I just like to say, this isn't anything new. A lot of this ordinance, I mean garbage ordinance, just to make it clear, this isn't new. But just think about it that, instead of worrying about how many houses are there that don't do it, just remember, if you're the neighbor of that person, that's enough.
I'm good. I got this one. Any other questions?
Yep, I have a couple more. It says, 308.32 does not address excess funds.
Excess funds?
Yep, that's what it says.
I don't understand the question.
What number is that?
Excess, I don't, it would be, it would be a fund that would be used to pay the, that those folks would be paying to, to pay their garbage bill. So there wouldn't be excess funds, it would be an in and out fund.
Can we answer that one? This one says, maybe assesses their taxes and are people going to take garbage out, going to get it picked up? I've seen Jared turn on, turn his eye, depends on who you are.
Well, I don't, I don't think that that's the case. I think that we have tried to enforce all of these rules across the board. I don't think that there's picking and choosing on who's getting blight tickets and who's not. Lisa, do you have any other ones?
This one, I think we have certain weekly registration, define rubbish enclosures. So properties with rubbish problems would be managed by council in public. We should be wary of delegating too much authority to those who are not affected. And that's the last question I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to the ambulance, and, oh, please.
This doesn't take effect until you're blighted.
Right, it doesn't take, okay. Yeah, okay, if that's the, I guess that was the question I didn't understand. But yeah, the blight would not, you would not be affected unless you were to get a blight ticket. So that's the, the situation that we're putting together, as dictated by the community conversation that we have. You would not get a blight, if you got a blight ticket, then that would trigger you to having to get garbage service in the city.
I would still inform, I don't want that.
Yeah, please.
So my question is, will there be another, will there be another opportunity for you to be reading what actually we should be seeing here tonight?
Yes.
So that we can comment.
There will be, there will be two city council meetings that will, that will discuss it. The first one will be the first reading, and it can be changed after the first reading, and then there would be a second reading, and the second reading, as it's written, would be what would go into a city ordinance. So there will still be two more, two more readings of this. All right, the next one that we wanted to discuss is the city ambulance and the situation that we're in. When I first became mayor, one of the things that I did is I asked the entire city council to rate the most important thing that they wanted to see fixed or changed while they were on city council. This was the number one thing that the council had looked at, that they wanted to address and move forward. One of the first things that our council did is with the leadership of Chief Manasa, he had us do a study with a gentleman named Mike Metro. And in that study, he said that the city was going to be losing money in the ambulance. There were a couple of things that we could change, there were things that we would not be able to change. Now, this study was done in 2018. I think we, we started in 2017, and we got the results in 2018. The results that came in had said that we needed to shift how we handled our paramedics, changing the shift structure, and that's one of the things that the city council did. And the other thing it did is said that we needed to raise our rates for our runs, which we also did. The more important thing that was in that study is, based on the payer mix that we have, the folks that pay by insurance, the people that don't have insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, and any of those payments, with the age of the folks that live in northern Minnesota, the folks that are on Medicare/Medicaid, we were going to see in the next four or five years, a huge increase in use of the ambulance, and also be running at a deficit due to the payer mix that we had. At that time, we had been losing money for a couple of years, but once that study came out, we were pretty cognizant that this is going to be something that we're going to be faced with in the long run. We put together a packet here for you, and it, it is just a brief overview of the state as a whole, our service specifically, and a Emergency Medical Services Regulation Board study that was just put out within the last three weeks. The wonderful thing that's happening is, we're not alone. Being in northern Minnesota, we have, our next level provider is going to be either Bemidji or Duluth, and by sending folks down to that next level of care, depending on payer mix, and I know Chief Manasa is considerably more versed on this than I am, but the payer mix is where the problem is. The Medicare/Medicaid is where we do lose money, and we all up here believe it is an essential service that we need to continue, we need to keep at the level that we have right now, and we have set a deadline for the council to come up with a decision on what we're doing. We, we are, I'm going to give some numbers really, really quick before I go any farther, and then I'm going to ask the chief to just give some overview thoughts, and then we'll go a little bit deeper into it. In, in the packet that you have on the third page, you can see our chief's report from January of this year, and this would be all of the calls that we had in 2022, so last year. If you look for the ambulance 911 calls, we had 106 911 calls, and we had transfers of, oh, I'm looking at December, I apologize. For 911 calls for the year, we had 1,106 for 2022. Our transfers, we had 443 transfers, and total runs for 2022 were 1,549. One of the things that's interesting about that number is, we are losing money on those numbers. I am going to ask you to get those, those specific numbers that I, that I had asked earlier about, from what we bill to what we receive.
Yeah, so. It's on, but pull it closer. On the second page that was handed out in your packet, if you look on the back of that, so I guess it's the third page, this is the important paragraph out of that under the title of billing. So we collect over 70% of our billable runs are government plans, so that's what we're talking about here, the Medicaid, Medicare, Medicaid. The next sentence below that is the important one. So we collect between 89 and 91% of our money that is collectible through our billing. The problem or the misnomer on that, that gets a little confused, is that's only 46% of our overall billings. So when we send out our billings, we send out about $3 million worth of billings in a year, and we collect less than 1.5 million back on that. So this is where that 46% comes in, and that's what the mayor's talking about.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, one of the things that, that's really interesting and important to have the, the conversation is in the same, in, in the report that we got from the EMS, uh, systems report, from the EMS, uh, EMS RB, one of the things that, uh, that is happening across the state, so we are not unique in any capacity, is in the, um, in the last, it's not the last page of this one. With the, um, the billables, we, of the operational cost to transport have surged with an increase range from fifty-five percent to a hundred and eighty-nine percent since, uh, two thousand and ten. Where that really comes down to a problem is the insurance billables and payments. Ambulance services in the state of Minnesota billed one point two billion in insurance billables, but only received four hundred and fifty million dollars, uh, to the, those agencies. It's the exact same issues that we're having and so the nice thing that we have is we, we are partnering, we're, we're working right now with, uh, our partners in our service area, which is, um, International Falls, Rainier, a portion of St. Louis County, and a large portion of Koochin County. We're working with our partners there to see if we can come up with a financial solution to, to fix this. But the bigger issue is not locally, the bigger issue is how the system is actually broken. And we can get, we're working with, uh, our partners at the state legislature, the federal legislature right now to try to fix the Medicare, Medicaid billing system, cause that's where a large issue that we're having is. And also with the state, because one of the, the situations that we're in is our, um, MSRB, our service area is, I gotta find all my pages. Service area is a little over, just under a thousand square miles. Um, and the city of International Falls is just under seven square miles. So by the state, by the state law, we have to service the entire area of our service area. But when it comes to the losses that we receive, that falls on the city of International Falls. The nice thing, the not nice thing in the situation that we're in is we were profitable for many years and that money stayed in that, in the ambulance fund and we slowly but surely depleted that, that amount. It didn't go to the general fund, it didn't go to any other city services, it stayed in the ambulance fund and we, we whittled that down. Now we're running in a deficit. Um, we have not, um, we, we've been running against the city, uh, reserve fund, so there are funds in there that the money has covered. We are working with the state legislature right now to help us, along with all these other cities that are running into a deficit, recoup those funds through the state and come up with a solution so that we can move forward. It is not, um, it's not ideal, but we still believe that the most important thing that we have right now with an aging population in northern Minnesota, International Falls, Koochin County, and Rainier, is to operate that ambulance. Um, we don't wanna see any changes, uh, so we are working with our partners in the best, best possible way we can to try to move forward. Does anyone else here have anything to talk about with the ambulance? Chief, you have any thoughts?
Sure. I just wanted to run through the packet in a little bit more detail here. So the first page that we see, uh, that's an infographic from the EMS RB. Uh, it's a great graphic showing exactly, uh, the number of calls in the state, seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, there's eight hundred and eighty-four individual trucks in the state, so that's literally ambulances in the state. Uh, and three hundred and forty-one active ambulance services. Uh, the next section down here is certified providers by level, and this has become an important factor since COVID. Uh, not across all the board of the healthcare system, so nursing and doctors and all that other stuff, we're seeing a decline in available people. So this infographic kinda tells that. And one of the telling things in the middle is fifty-nine percent of certified EMTs are not running ambulance calls. So that means they're either gonna let their license lapse or they're just not running calls. That's a big deal. We, uh, we turn the page over, the probably the most telling graphic on this whole thing is the Minnesota, it's below the dollar sign in the forty-five percent. Minnesota Medicare/Medicaid payment rate is between three hundred and fifty and four hundred and sixty-five dollars per run. So there is a graph in one of these reports that shows exactly what Medicare/Medicaid pays on your runs, indicative of what you bill. You can bill a thousand dollars, you can bill five thousand dollars, they are gonna pay a set rate. That rate is outlined in a graph. So you minus the expense of the run, which can be between four hundred and eighteen hundred dollars across the state. And each ambulance service in the state of Minnesota loses between fifty and one thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars every time an ambulance goes out the door. So if you do the math on fifteen hundred runs per year, at fifty dollars minimum loss, that's seventy-five thousand dollars lost out the door before ever starting. I think that's a very telling graphic and that's kinda the basis of our conversation. When we go to the next page, uh, titled talking points for the International Falls ambulance service, this is one I really wanted to beat down a little bit here. This is our statistics. This deals with our ambulance service. So our PSA, as the mayor talked about, our prescribed service area is assigned to us by the EMS RB. It covers nine hundred and eighty-nine square miles. The average in the northeast region is five hundred and twenty square miles and the average in the state of Minnesota is two hundred and fifty-six square miles. So we have a very large service area. We don't have a lot of population, but we have a ton of area we have to cover. Average miles per call, so if we get a nine-one-one, uh, the state average is seven miles on a call. It's all calls, it's not just nine-one-ones, I gotta be clear on that. The state average is seven miles per run, our average is forty-four miles per run. So that takes into account nine-one-ones and transfers. If you look at our run volume in twenty-one, uh, it's one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven, uh, nine hundred and forty-one nine-one-ones, five hundred and fifty-six transfers, and then fifteen forty-nine in twenty-two, with eleven hundred and six nine-one-ones, as the mayor stated, and four hundred and forty-three transfers. Our run numbers are, have been fairly steady in the last seven or eight years, right around that fifteen hundred mark total. Uh, our staffing currently, we have five full-time paramedics, uh, we have six positions, we still have one opening. And then we have, the number floats a little bit, but we're at twenty paid-on-call EMTs right now. The way we staff is from six AM to six PM. We can do paramedic, paramedic crew, but we can also drop that to a paramedic EMT crew during staff shortages. So right now, when we're down to five paramedics, that's what we're doing. And we actually have one out on, also out, so we're running four right now for the time being. So we're running a paramedic EMT crew six AM to six PM and same thing, six PM to six AM. The next part is something I wanted to throw in that I thought was really important. Uh, so you're gonna hear us reference the EMS RB and the Minnesota Regulatory Services Board. We're not making this stuff up, so we have to run by rules, we are regulated by an agency that gives us a license and dictates the rules that we run under. So the Minnesota EMS RB is a mega Minnesota Emergency Services Regulatory Board. Their authority is granted to them through state statute, it's one forty-four E, and they enforce administrative, Minnesota Administrative Rules forty-six ninety. And that's a little bit important when we flip over to the side of the page here. I've included the ambulance deficit, so we have the, the actual year. We put two thousand twelve through two, two thousand twenty-two. Every year in those ten-year periods, we lost money and that's indicated in the next column of how much money was lost per year and then the accumulated fund balance on the next column over. So for the last five years, twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two, the average is two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents per year. We kinda covered this next section, billing, so over seventy percent of our runs are government runs and we did cover that. One thing we did not state earlier is we do use an outside third-party vendor, so we are not sending our own bills in the city. We are not processing our own bills in the city. We are paying a company to do that for us. Uh, traditionally, they've been very good at what they do, uh, and they've done very well for us. Uh, anecdotally, um, our basic life support, so BLS is fifty-two percent of the total runs and our advanced life support accounts for forty-eight percent of the runs. So again, year to year, that can shift a percent or two, but generally speaking, we're split fifty-fifty on ALS runs and BLS runs. The rates we charge are listed below. So we have the BLS, ALS one, ALS two, specialty care. I'm not a medical coder, but I can tell you a little bit of the difference there. Uh, it has to do with the interventions and what are done on the run. But again, as stated before, if you look into one of the reports down there, you will find a graph that even though we charge one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars for a BLS run with an additional twenty dollars a loaded mile, we're gonna get four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, and we can change that number as much as we want from Medicare and Medicaid. Insurance companies and private payers are a little different, we can collect most of that money. Unfortunately, the mix, our payer mix, is skewed to the fact that, again, seventy percent of our billable runs are government runs. That is our information. We have a lot more data we can share with you, but this is our information that, that was of our service. The rest of the packet is state information. It's, it's what's going on across the state. And the reason I included that is our numbers match just about one for one with the numbers that are in the reports that have been done by the EMS RB, uh, the infographic that was on the front, and all of this stuff we listed as reference material on the bottom of the sheet. So everything you see in blue, I understand you're not sitting on a computer right now, but if you enter that stuff into a computer, that will get you exactly to those reports. Um, as we flip through the reports, I'm gonna skip my yearly report, here the mayor did talk about that. But the first one, just for example, financial evolution of Minnesota ground ambulance industry. So what I did for each report is I covered the title page, I did the executive summary, and then usually the conclusion page. But if you look down the bottom of the conclusion page, this is a thirty-nine-page document. We've included three pages of it. So if you wanna get more in-depth, please go online and look at them, there's a lot of great information in here. And again, we just kinda wanted to cover the pertinent info that we saw. Excuse me. As we jump into the next report, the, the twenty twenty-two EMS report, I'm not gonna go through this page for page, but one that I did wanna jump into was the one titled page eight in this report, and it was age distribution of patient contacts. So if we look in the, the, that total number of seven hundred and, uh, it was on the front page, seven hundred and fifteen thousand ambulance runs, if we start from the right to the left, the age of the patients, eight years old and older, was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand of those runs. So if we go down to the sixty-plus, so sixty to sixty-nine, seventy to seventy-nine, and eighty-plus, if we add all of those together, that's three hundred and thirty-six thousand of the seven hundred and fifteen thousand runs. Those are gonna be our Medicare/Medicaid patients. Um, so those are the ones that, that we are losing money on. One of the problem, not problems, one of the things we have as an ambulance service that should be outlined and highlighted, just like a hospital or anything else, we cannot discriminate against payers. We cannot ask you what your insurance is, we cannot ask you if you're Medicare/Medicaid, and we cannot deny a run because of that reason. So any runs that we get called for, nine-one-one specifically, we are doing. Indicative of who the insurance payer is. Uh, the rest of the reports, I'm not, again, not gonna go through this page for page, but I would stand for questions at this time.
All right, the first question I have, will funding changes affect the current ALS, um, ambulance service?
As of right now, I can tell you that the council's intention is to continue with the service that we have. Um, we may, we may, the conversation may be having, um, less ALS, uh, conversation. Um, those are the conversations that we're having, but I can tell you that it is the intention of every member of the council to continue the service in which we have due to the age and the need that we have for our community, both inside International Falls and outside the, the service area that we provide. We, it is our intention to move forward as an ALS system.
Next question, why does our ambulance service not contract with private insurance? At least you would get some payment. Why is the billing outsourced and how much does that cost the city?
The billing being outsourced, uh, we pay twenty-nine dollars flat rate for every ambulance run processed. So that's what we pay our billing agent, is twenty-nine dollars. Um, will you read the first part of that again, please?
Um, basically, why is it outsourced? And why are we not contracted with a private insurance?
I assume the first part is in reference to taking assignment to insurance companies?
Yes.
We don't take assignment on any insurance companies, uh, we, we've never have done that, um. I don't know the reason, other than we've been advised against it by every billing company we've had in the past.
So we can balance bill the number of difference?
We cannot balance bill, at least with Medicare/Medicaid, that is an illegal practice.
I understand that about the private insurance, you don't contract with private insurance, so then you can balance bill the number of difference? If you contract with insurance, you get the participating rate, now you're only getting the non-participating rate?
That, that's definitely something that we can, we can look into as we're.
I'll, I'll be honest, there, there is a reason, I don't know what it is, we can look in further to that.
We, we'll, thank you for that, that's good information, it's something we can look into. Cause I, I can, it's not something I've heard of, so if we can find out why we cannot or look into it, it's something we will research.
Yeah, and actually, if I could talk to you afterwards, I wanna make sure I get that down perfectly.
I spoke to your billing company there.
Expert?
What was that?
Expert, expert?
Expert.
That's the name of the billing company, expert?
Yeah. Okay, the next one, are there any part-time paramedics? Whoever, whoever answered that.
We don't have any currently. Uh, we have over time had casual paramedics, it depends, uh, who's around, who's not. Um, we have one, well, we have one that's licensed, that's kinda in a float mode right now, she just took a different job, so we're, we're kind of in the middle with that, but we have at times had casual paramedics and we have at times not had casual paramedics.
How did the pay rate change with paramedics joining the union, um, overtime pay with transfers? Is there only one paramedic on duty at a time?
The paramedics were always in the union, we did not have them not in the union, the EMTs are not in the union, but the paramedics always were. Uh, I think we answered the staffing model and what was the other part of that, how the rate changed?
Yeah, how did the pay rate change with paramedics joining the union, which is that they've always been in the union, um, overtime pay with transfers?
There is, yeah, there, there is overtime incurred, they do get paid overtime, time and a half, we try and minimize that as much as possible.
Um, the next question is what is the percentage of counties that have ambulance taxing districts in Minnesota?
That is a very good question, I don't know the answer to that. There are several ambulance taxing districts. Uh, I just spoke with, um, David Lee is his name, he is the ground ambulance supervisor from North Memorial out of Rainier. So in that particular area, they contract with six or seven different counties. So to answer that question is a little bit loaded, meaning that is one taxing district that involves seven different counties. So. So if we were to do a taxing district in our area, ours would include two different counties. So we would have to have a taxing district with Koochin County and with St. Louis County as our coverage area goes into that. So the answer of the taxing district versus the county's affected, I don't have the answer to that.
Really quick, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we do have one taxing, ambulance taxing district in the county right now. Is that correct? Little Fork?
Little Fork ambulance takes advantage of a taxing district. That taxing district did not start as an ambulance taxing district. That was the taxing district for the clinic or hospital that was in Little Fork when that ceased to operate and that got shifted over to the ambulance.
What Minnesota statutes allow cities to opt out of a taxing district?
I don't, I don't, I don't know of any. I, I don't, I don't.
And what is the state doing to help rural communities?
So right now, um, I've been in good conversation with, uh, with Senator Housechild, and he has been appointed to a committee to look at rural ambulance, uh, funding. There is conversations at the state level to, um, come up with a fund that can help pay previous year's losses to get us home. The other conversations that they have, um, that, you know, I've been privy to is one of them would be allow the, uh, MSRB, EMSRB that we're discussing right now, if, uh, you have to service outside of your municipality to allow that municipality to negotiate rates with, uh, the other areas that are affected inside. So specifically with us, very similar to, um, how we handle rural fire. We negotiate with rural fire a contract rate for, um, providing fire service. So we would be able to contract with Koochin County, we would be able to contract with St. Louis County, and we would be able to contract with, uh, Rainier to provide the service. Right now, um, we have to provide the service and those entities do not have to pay. And that's, uh, that's above our pay grade, and so we're, we're working with, uh, the state on that, on that particular issue.
Okay, the next question I believe already answered, who isn't paying for ambulance?
There's, there's only one, oh, I guess. Yeah, so the, right now, we have to service a portion of St. Louis County, International Falls, a large portion of Koochin County, and the city of Rainier. When we do runs, um, however they work out, if, if we end up taking a loss, that loss falls a hundred percent onto the city of International Falls. Uh, again, it is in a dedicated fund, as you guys can see on this paperwork. So if we were to do a run hypothetically in Rainier and we were to lose, um, four hundred dollars on that particular run, that sits with the city of International Falls. That doesn't get charged back to Rainier. It doesn't get charged back to the county. Um, it, it sits into this dedicated fund that the city holds. That's, that's the big qualm that we're in, and that's where we're at. And I think that's the best way to, or explain that, that scenario.
Next question, explain why the city is responsible for nine hundred and eighty-nine square miles. Can't the certificate of need be relinquished? Then taxpayers outside the city could pay for EMS service outside city limits?
That's, that's the, that's the argument that we're having. That's the conversation that, uh, that I've been fighting with, with, uh, the legislature. Um, we are, we're in a, a spot. I mean, the state law dictates that we have this service area and we have to service that, that area. And don't get me wrong, when, when times were good, when this, when this all started in the eighties, we, uh, we, we jumped at the opportunity to provide the service for northern Minnesota. There was, uh, funds that came in, and I am very happy to have found out in the last week, as we've been putting this information together, that all of that money stayed in the ambulance fund and it didn't get spent on any other projects. So when there were bad data, bad times which we're in now, that, uh, that was able to cover those, um, the losses that we have now. The, the situation really comes down to, it's a tough deal. Uh, um, we, we're, we're doing our best.
Next question, has a taxing district been discussed by the partners of our service area?
Yes, we have been, uh, working diligently with, uh, Koochin County, uh, Rainier, and St. Louis County. We, we started this process approximately seven years ago. Uh, we've had lots of, uh, conversation. We have not been able to finalize anything, but there is, uh, there is a, um, new committee that's being formed again. Um, I have just heard that the county has appointed two folks to that committee. Um, we will be looking at appointing some folks to that committee, excuse me, and, uh, will be reaching out to St. Louis County and to Rainier to continue to try to have these conversations.
Next question, is ambulance service an essential city service? Why not tax the cost?
It is not an essential, um, service, but, uh, defined by state legislature. If it was an essential service, the city would receive additional funds through LGA or local government aid to cover those costs for the rest of the area. That is not my specialty. I think Chief Manasa could explain that one slightly better?
Uh, no, you hit the nail on the head. I don't know, uh, the designation or why it came to that, but the mayor is correct. EMS is not deemed an essential service at the state level or by legislation. Therefore, again, as he stated, not reimbursable through LGA, or funded is probably the better word, not reimbursed.
What year did we go into a paramedic system?
Uh, I believe the very first paramedic we hired was in two thousand nine, and I think the other three followed in two thousand ten.
What are the different pay rates of EMTs and paramedics?
Our EMTs right now get paid twenty-two dollars an hour to staff the hall. Uh, nine-one-one call-ins are seventy-five dollars base rate and a dollar a loaded mile. Transfers are seventy-five dollars base rate and a dollar a loaded mile. Those, the, the hourly rate changed recently, but the base rate and mileage rates have been in effect since I started in two thousand seven, and those were the rates in two thousand seven, uh, for that. Paramedics right now are under union contract and it, we have a step scale in ours, and I can't recite the exact dollar amount, but there's five steps in there. I think we're topped out at thirty-three-ish dollars an hour. Uh, if you're at the top step, and I think the bottom step is twenty-six, right in that area. So depending on years of service, they follow a step in their union contract.
How much money is left in, in reserves and when should we expect property tax increases to cover ambulance service for the rest of the county?
Um, our, our reserves, um, are, are supposed to be half of what our annual operating budget is. We would be fine for the next three or four years. We, we do believe that we're gonna be able to get some help through the state this year with the surplus that they've had. Uh, this is a major priority. As you can see, that the state has put out that, uh, that, uh, information because we're not unique in this situation. As for raising it with property taxes, that, that is the last thing that we wanna do. That's why we've been running an deficit against the, the, um, against the reserves. Uh, we, we look at that as a dedicated fund that would be able to be, uh, filled based off of either A, um, getting, getting an influx from the state, B, coming together for some form of a taxing district, or, you know, if the state or the federal government was to be able to change the, the med, well, the federal government changed the Medicare Medicaid rates to make it so that it can be a, a profitable or break-even, uh, venture, we would be able to move forward. It is not the intention of the city council. In fact, we're making some very, very difficult choices right now so that we don't have to put that on the taxpayers of International Falls. We don't believe that it's fair, uh, for the taxpayers to, to take those, uh, those financial hits. One of the things that I do wanna add that I think we've kind of just glossed over, but I think is really important to this narrative as well. In the event that, uh, we have folks that, um, are outside of the International Falls service area even, let's say, uh, some folks from Little Fork come up to International Falls because they need to go to first level of care, and then from International Falls, uh, from our hospital, they get transferred down to Duluth. Again, even though that, that, that folk, those folks came from Little Fork, from a different taxing district because they left International Falls, that falls on us. And I don't believe in any capacity that the taxpayers of International Falls should have to put, take that burden on when it's because they've been at our hospital that now we have to pay for the losses to go to a secondary, uh, hospital. So, real quick to, to just say that, it is not our intention, um, as we move forward. There's gonna be a lot tougher questions that we have before we put the ambulance on the taxpayers for International Falls.
And the last one I have is just a comment. Um, it says, look at the process. They had an experience of using an ambulance in May and noted issues with billing.
Yeah, and, and specifically, was that yours? Okay. Chief, one of the questions that she had had, uh, was the, the billing situation when, uh, when she received the bill through our billing company. It wasn't clear on how to get the information to be able to contact somebody to talk about the bill or actually physically receive a bill rather than just being an email. Uh, could you just address that?
Uh, yeah, so we, we are with the same billing company we've been with for the last few years. Their ownership changed in April, I think it was, and their service is, has changed. I don't wanna say it's funny, but we just dealt with that on a phone call today, myself and Betty, uh, dealing with some of those questions and problems that we're, we're experiencing with this company. We also have a, uh, meeting set up next week to entertain an offer from a different billing company. So when this company changed hands, it went from somebody that was very experienced in the medical world. They did pharmacy billing and mental health billing before, and then bought an ambulance billing service, which worked out really good for them. The new owner is strictly a businessman that bought a business to make a profit and is not very experienced in ambulance billing. So we are very much looking into that and will most likely, well, I don't wanna say most likely, we will be very highly looking into making a change on that before the end of the year.
It would've been very nice if I could have just used my telephone and taken a picture and sent it off to them, but I couldn't do that. There was no phone number. There was no website to contact, um, and so that really made a problem.
That, that, that's exactly the issue we're dealing with today. So prior to April, when you got an ambulance bill, it came, they sent out a sheet of paper with the, the phone number, the address, a pre-stamped envelope, or a pre-addressed, pre-stamped envelope, the whole nine yards. And we're, we had a, a sneaking suspicion here that that wasn't happening or that there was some wrong information on that sheet of paper, and that's what we were digging into today. So you're, you're spot on.
I, I literally went down and got a folder, wound up getting four copies down at South North and sent it in because I couldn't imagine that you wouldn't wanna get the absolute picture of the card. It's done in hospitals, it's done in clinics, it's done everywhere.
And, and even though we don't, uh, administer the billing, you can always stop at City Hall or the Fire Hall. We would have gladly helped you with that and done the best we could to get you guided right on that.
What would've been nice, uh, I did, I did check on the Fire Hall website. Uh, you had many little, uh, things up there about, gotta forget my Christmas tree fire and all kinds of things like that. But there was, uh, something that would've been nice if you'd had on there how to fill out your, uh, form that comes.
Uh, that used to be on the city website, right on the homepage. I don't, unless that changed very recently, that was on the homepage.
We'll look into that for sure. Lisa?
One second, to get a note. Okay. Um, it's important to recognize the significant training and personnel cost the paramedics incurred to learn their ALS skills. Don't squander the paramedics we have by downshifting to a BL, BLS-only service. Comment?
I don't think that's anybody's intention, but I would like Mayor to answer that.
I, I, I totally agree. Um, and, and that's the, that's the conversation that we're having. We wanna keep the ALS, uh, the ALS service, advanced life support. That, that is the goal of the council, is to keep what we have.
Could you clarify the reserve funds that might last three to four years? Is that from the previous ambulance funds before it went, um, into the red?
No, no. Um, the, the city has a, uh, annual budget of approximately thirteen million dollars. Uh, we, previous city councils have, uh, decided that it is important for the city council to always have half of our operating budget available in our general fund. It, it's in, it's in, it's in the chart, I guess. I, I thought it was a resolution of a previous city council. Anyways, any way you slice it, there's always been, uh, half of our operating budget in there. And that came up years ago when Governor Palenti had, uh, had canceled LGA, local government aid, and the city ended up being in a bind because we rely so heavily on local government aid to offset the taxes from our, uh, our residents. So when that local government aid didn't come in, then they made that, that, uh, to move forward. So when we say there is, uh, there is a fund, it is the general fund, which, uh, we, we have every intention, every year, we are able to replenish that with local government aid, with, uh, with the tax levy, with everything that we, we do to run our budget. But there's always been that fifty percent, and we are under that, that dollar amount right now. Um, that came out, uh, earlier this year when we had our audit. Um, and that's kind of where we really started picking up the pace on the ambulance because if we continue to lose money and we don't come up with a solution, we are going to have to, um, we're gonna have to make some very tough decisions, whether it's, um, change the service, which is the last thing we wanna do, if it is, um, to not do road or street projects, to, you know, I mean, it comes down to budget. And this year, we were able to receive some funds from the state of Minnesota, um, for, that could be used for, um, that purpose. And the conversation at the council level was to utilize that to take down some of the debt. But as we were looking at the rising costs with inflation, we came to a, a different conclusion that we can't continue to raise the taxes on the taxpayers. Um, so we, we put that into, um, a fund that we can utilize to offset some of our other costs.
Just raise the taxes. You just raised the taxes.
We did raise the taxes, and it would've been considerably more had we not.
The next question is, where did COVID money go?
COVID money went to, uh, a handful of projects between the, I, I can't, I can't answer that one directly. I mean, there's, there was lots of funds that came in. I know that they were all used based off of, uh, state statute and how we could, uh, how we could use them. Um, I don't know specifically where that is. That was not a question I was prepared for tonight, but I can get that information, uh, as we move forward.
Should've went to the ambulance.
Any additional questions from the audience?
There's a couple we have filled out right now.
Okay.
You know, and, and funds definitely did go to the ambulance. I mean, any way you slice it, there was funds that went to the Fire Hall.
Not all of it, Harley.
Not all of it. I-
I know, I know where it went. I saw the papers. Just tell us.
I don't know the answer.
Next question. Do you have an idea of the dollar amount each resident in the county would be assessed on taxes to cover ambulance service annually?
I would have to, I would have to come up with, I don't want to say a guess, but the conversations that we've had with, with the county board in the past was approximately sixty dollars. And that is not set in stone, that is not finalized in any capacity, that is kind of where, where the conversation started. And one of the, one of the interesting things that really has come to light recently is, again, if you look in, in the packet that we provided, the ambulance and the, uh, fire, we took the fire, oh, there it is, in, in the fire department and for ambulance. For fire department in 2022, we had fifty-three total department responses. Twenty-six of those were in the county and twenty-seven were in the city. The, the dollar amount for rural fire is ninety? Ninety dollars. For residential fire. The likelihood of someone being called for an ambulance is going to be so much higher than it is for fire. So, one of the things, and, and this is, this is just a conversation point, is for the folks that live outside of the city, if, if it was sixty dollars, you're more likely to have to call an ambulance than you are for a fire. But again, that number is not set in stone in any capacity, but that is the, the opening conversations that we're having with the partners that we're working on for ambulance. Any other questions?
The microphone went to them.
In addition to that, who is fighting sixty dollars a year? I mean, I think that's ludicrous, you know? You know, I'd pay ninety dollars for my rural fire and I'll, I'll pay four hundred dollars to know, because I wouldn't be able to get insurance out in the county if I didn't have rural fire coverage, you know? Sorry, but I think that ambulance service is worth every cent and then some. And I don't, where's the county representatives here tonight? For all of us that live out in the county, they should be sitting up there too. This is ridiculous to even have this conversation for sixty dollars a year.
Well, thank you.
This is ridiculous. I, I cheerfully pay into the school district of International Falls. Don't have any grandchildren, don't have any children that go there. Mine go over in Little Fork. There's a reason for that, but you know, that's beside the point. Um, you know, I'm happy to pay the, the school district, whatever. I just don't understand all these conversations for seven years. You kidding me? Do something about it. Good job.
We're going to have you as our, our liaison. So, the, the, the piece of the puzzle there is, and, and in some capacity, I would, I, I see the situation at the county in Rainier and St. Louis County. They don't have to pay, so they do get the service for free, and I'm not, I, I'm not going to discredit that because they're looking out for residents that live outside the city that, that are their constituents. The one thing that I do struggle with is the city residents of International Falls are still in Koochin County, and they are your, your county rep, or your city representatives at, at the county level. So, please call and have those conversations with your county commissioners. If you live in Rainier, please talk to Rainier and say that this is important to you and you want to have ambulance service and, I don't want to say help the city, but legitimately help provide ambulance service for northern Minnesota. Yes, please.
Just piggyback on that a little bit. I agree with you, ma'am. I can't believe it's taken seven years and, and we haven't come up with a solution, whether it's a taxing district or not. And it's my intention for it not to take another seven years, for one. We don't have seven years in our reserve. And if you are going to talk to, if your county residents or Rainier, your representatives, as Harley says, you don't have to pay for it right now, but if we're out of money in, say, three years in our reserves, well, there won't be an ambulance for anybody, and I get a little pushback with some of my full councilmen. What's the state going to do when we don't have any money? They can hardly make us have an ambulance. So, this is a problem that's going to take everybody to help. And like Harley said, we don't want to have to go back to BLS. Nobody wants that. That's not our plan. But the thing is, like I just said, if we run all the money, we won't have any ambulance. But our goal is to keep the high standard and educated people, and they're wonderful, our paramedics and our EMTs that work for the city of International Falls. They do an excellent job. And, and another thing with that is if people talk about going back to BLS service, which is EMT, um, called paramedics pretty much, well, one of the problems with that even is, like Adam said, the people are not volunteer, those are volunteer positions that people, yes, they get paid and they get a little for being out called, but that's volunteer, doing it on their own. And like all first responder industries, people just aren't signing up to do that, you know, for whatever reason. So, and that's why, as you all know a lot, you know what, I kind of kickstarted this maybe when I sent a letter to my other board members to make a resolution that we come up with some type of resolution by the first of March of what we're going to do to get some urgency with this problem here. Hopefully that, when we start working with the county, we can go at a little faster pace.
Councilor Bowler?
I think moving forward, be a good idea. I saw, I saw the last couple of days at the city of Nashua, they dissolved their ambulance service as now, and it'd be interesting to see what, what actually becomes of that because they're relying on, on twenty-five or thirty-minute service, I think they said they had to have, instead of just having ambulance right there in town. So, just to see what's, how that progresses on would be very interesting to keep an eye on too.
I did get one more question here. So, we have your word tonight that no taxes of the upcoming tax year will be going towards the ambulance deficit.
I, I can tell you beyond the shadow of a doubt, one hundred percent guaranteed, my hand on a Bible, there will be no taxes of the city of International Falls going towards the ambulance in 2024. Now, next year, depending on what happens, we, we don't know. I mean, we, we can tell, I can tell you right now that Chief Manasa has let me know that this is the closest year we've ever been to breaking even in the ambulance in years. Is that accurate? No? I thought we were close to breaking even this year. Oh, twenty-one is closer than this year.
As it's trending.
As it's trending. But we are losing less. And one of the, one of the key things in this whole conversation is, and I'm actually surprised one of the questions didn't come up, of privatizing the ambulance. And a couple of years back, the city did look at privatizing the ambulance and did some exploratory conversations with a potential buyer of the ambulance. Let, let's say that on average, we're losing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now every year. For them to take over the service area as large as it is and for the aging population that Koochin County has that they would be servicing, it would cost one point two million dollars for the city to have that company annually. So, I'm telling you right now, it is my belief that we have one of the most well-run ambulances and some of the greatest staff that you could have to be there when you, when you have to call nine-one-one or you need somebody to be there for you. We are running efficiently. The system itself is what's broken. Any other questions? Please.
I think we've got great hospital systems, great EMTs and everything on ambulance, fire department. But if we're just a one cog in the wheel here, from first responders all the way to hospital, to Duluth, to Rochester, wherever they go, why isn't the bill attached with the hospital bill? If you would set A rate for Duluth, that would be part of the hospital bill. So, hospital pays the ambulance, here's twelve hundred dollars to run. That's just attached to the patient's bill, which might be covered, maybe under their transportation bases of their health insurance.
Yeah, and, and, and. Yeah, I understand that question. And Chief, do you want to take it? I, I can definitely take it too. Doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep.
So, the, the, the system, in the event that we had an attached, an attached system, so Essentia went to Essentia, or we had Sanford that went to Sanford, they would take that loss by ambulance to take from one level of care to the second level of care, because they're still going to lose money on the ambulance, any way you slice it. But the, but the situation is, since they're taking it to a level, second level of care, they are going to be able to recoup those losses by the surgery, the, the care that you're going to get at that second level. The situation that we're in, as I understand it, is when you leave Rainy Lake Medical Center, you're going to another, another facility. So, we become a primary provider in between, so we can only bill for that run. It doesn't get attached to the hospital and it doesn't get attached to the incoming hospital. Is that relatively correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the short answer is there's no mandate that they have to do that, so they're not going to do that. And it's kind of the same hurdle in the initial discussions of a taxing district. If nobody's paid in the past, why are they going to pay now? And those are conversations that have been had and are still continuing to be had. Our hospital is a great partner with us, and they've sat in on those meetings and had those conversations. Where, it's been looked at, but nothing has been moved on, on that, to answer your question.
Please, Bowler?
Uh, just a couple of comments. International Falls has three county commissioners, and those folks need to be pressured into getting off the butts moving forward with a taxing district for this ambulance service. Although I believe that a taxing district is only a band-aid over a dashing wound.
Exactly.
Our hospital is listed as a critical access hospital, which means that they get reimbursed a lot of money from Medicare and Medicaid. If we could push our federal officials to create something, a critical access ambulance service, then that would solve our problems. And we know how quickly the federal government works. So, if we could get, get this, this partnership together to put the band-aid on the wound, maybe at some point in the future, we could actually have a solution to our problem.
You're, you're spot on. These are part of the conversations that have happened also. So, the EMS RB that we keep referencing, they just got a new executive director about a year ago, year and a half ago. This person is very aggressive in handling some of these federal items, along with the Minnesota Ambulance Association and the American Ambulance Association. So, the Minnesota Ambulance Association has been very proactive on having town hall meetings and roundtables much like this with ambulance services and hospitals in different regions of the state. So, there, there, there's been one just a week ago that we sat in on. The gentleman's name I'm going to share is the lobbyist for the Minnesota Ambulance Association. His name is Buck McElpin, and he has been pushing hard at the legislative level to get some changes done. So, Representative Hewitt from Metro Area, I can't remember exactly where, he sits on the board of the MSRB along with Buck McElpin on the MMA, or the Minnesota Ambulance Association. And they're pushing hard to get legislation changed and to attack that federal problem. As you can imagine, attacking a federal problem is a big, this isn't something that happens overnight and we're slow coming to the party, so to speak, at a state level. But the gears are finally starting to move now, so these studies that have been handed out are the work of the new executive director of the MSRB to get that data moving forward and get it to the legislators that need to see it. And they're starting to get some traction and they're starting to get some movement. So, I do want to say, I think you're absolutely right. A taxing district might get us out of the weeds for a year or two or three, whatever that may be, but it's not a permanent fix. One of the side discussions that took place on that too is, is there any danger in fixing our own problem? So, when we always do more with less, does that really scream to the legislators that we have a problem? So, that's been the motive behind these town hall meetings, the Minnesota Ambulance Association and some of these other organizations, to collectively say, drop the pride, drop the front, we're all hurting and we're all suffering, we need to do something. So, it kind of got rid of the, let's do more with less and let's admit that we have some financial issues happening across the board, across the state, across all ambulance services. As the mayor stated before, the healthcare system is broken. It's a big problem to fix, but that's the problem. When we sat in this town hall meeting a week ago, it was glaringly obvious what the problem was. It came back around time and time and time again. So, learning how to attack that problem, learning how to work around it is going to be more than this group, unfortunately, more than the group up here in the county board. It's a statewide problem with organizations much like this that need to help attack that problem and get the legislators involved, which has already begun to happen. Thank you for your comment, though. You were spot on.
Absolutely. You are spot on. And I just wanted to add that that was one of the, that was one of the things that broke down in the conversations with, with the county in Rainier and St. Louis County a year ago, two years ago. I'm really sorry of time. This has been such a long project. But that was one of the things that was the breakdown, was if we come up with a taxing district, it doesn't fix the problem. So, in the event that we continue to lose money, it just taxes everybody on that dollar amount if we continue losing money. So, we need to fix the problem where it is. Myself, Chief Manasa, and Councilor Kayler, a couple of months ago, along with some other folks, had an opportunity to sit down with Senator Kobachar, and we, we discussed this conversation on, on the ambulance for the federal level. So, we, we are doing everything in our power to address those that can make the decisions. And I, I greatly appreciate that. That is, that is the right comment, for sure. Any other comments?
What is the, what is the county of Rainier, what is their thoughts on?
I can't address their thoughts. I, I don't know their thoughts.
Well, I mean, what are their ideas, you know, in tribute or whatever?
I, I, I'm not going to comment.
Right now, they're the issue. They're the issue. I don't mind hearing my share, but they need to pay their share.
And I.
And everybody else.
Where the, so to answer a little bit of your question, when we had the taxing district committee formed by city councilor members and the county commissioners, what had ended up happening is we were short on the county board. If you remember, we had a huge rollover in the county board in the last year for various issues or, or reasons. So, the, the chair of the county board at that time did not want to address anything further until they were fully seated. So, they're now just getting fully seated again and abreast of the issues across the county. So, I think they wanted to take a little pause and take a little thing until they got fully seated. And I don't want to speak for the county commissioners. That was just my interpretation of the meetings and I think, well, or Councilor Bowler, I think you were in those meetings. Is that accurate?
Accurate, yes.
Do they have any kind of an idea how we can solve this?
We, we're, we're in negotiations, we're having conversations.
The county board, do they have any ideas what's a good way to solve this? It's their problem that they're not helping us pay for some. What is their idea? Have they given you some kind of an idea?
Again, I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the county board. We're, we're, we're doing our best to work together. We are having. We are having, uh, we're having, we're having monthly meetings with the county board, uh, right here in Vacas, where we're having discussions on, on everything from the airport, ambulance district, uh, recycling, the ju, the, the jail that they're building. Um, some of the county commissioners are coming to our city council meetings and listening to the issues that we're having right at the council meetings. Um, I was able to attend their last, uh, committee of the whole, where I discussed, uh, the ambulance. And from that discussion, they did come out with having two members appointed to, um, a, a, a task force to try to come up with a, a solution. So again, we're, we're in negotiation and we are doing everything in our power. But again, the last thing I want is, uh, is other entities to speak on behalf of the city council, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the county board. Um, just, just wrapping up, I just want to say thank you to all you guys that came out. We do have, um, we will be having another one of these, uh, within the next two months. Uh, the next one that we're looking at doing is, uh, about the Cary Park project. Uh, we're at the point, uh, where we have, uh, we have received one million dollars from the state of Minnesota for design and engineering. Um, we are actively doing the study on what it would cost to fix the arena that we have right now, which would be on the city of International Falls. Um, because it is our arena, and there is not funds at the state level to fix, um, the current structure that we have. But there is funds that would allow us to build new. So we want to evaluate and look at what those dollar amounts are and take community input. Um, contrary to, uh, social media, I can tell you that this council that, that we have right now is very open to listening to the concerns that we have from our community. So, um, I look forward to having another one of these. I do greatly appreciate all you folks coming out tonight and have a great evening.
Oh, yeah. Yes, please.
What's that? We will not be having another, uh, garbage ordinance, but there will be two more conversations at the council level regarding, uh, regarding garbage ordinance.
Conversations before it's voted on?
Correct. At two council meetings. I'd just like to say a couple of the comments and the questions, I'm still disappointed with, that were directed at the great people that work for this ambulance service, the paramedics, the volunteer EMTs. Very disappointed, they are not part of this issue, they're not part of the problem here. The problem is, we're not getting paid by the insurance companies. So we're asking what they're paid, what their wages are, and what their hours are. If you want different service, we, that's where we're headed. But these people are great, they do a great job. Um, I think you need to support them as much as you can. Um, we're all in favor of ALS service, um, but we have a major problem here. There isn't a lot of time to fix it. So we're hopeful that it stays that way.
Any other comments from the council? All right, again, thank you guys all for coming. Um, I'll stick around for a little while if you want to just ask some questions one-on-one. But, uh, we will, um, also be, the information Lisa has written down, we will get at our council meeting and we will get that information out to the folks that we didn't have tonight. Thank you again.